Welcome, everybody, to the City Council Workshop, December 5. We'll get started immediately and ask the City Manager to give us a response to the council questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. You have in your packet a letter dated December 5 which outlines questions and responses from prior workshops. I'll run through these quickly. On the CDBG program, how many homes could be demolished with increased funding of $37,000? The answer is two. Two single-family homes could be demolished with those funds. Also on CDBG, have conversations take place with other agencies about access to funds to help offset challenges of reduced block grant dollars? The answer is yes, although I will tell you, I think much more work needs to be done in that regard. Both Polk County Housing Trust Fund and the Federal Home Loan Bank have been contacted in regard to loss of funds there. The Polk County Housing Trust has awarded $375,000 additional to the city to manage those programs. Federal Home Loan Bank has decided not to fund the city's application this year.
Have they done that previously, though?
I believe they have funded it in prior years, but not this particular year. Next question on the budget update, what kind of data will be received regarding health care savings? We are working on a performance matrix at present, and we'll be providing that to you on an ongoing periodic basis in the coming weeks. Several questions having to do with tree service licensing. I'll run through these. What is the number of licensed arborists in Des Moines in the region? The International Society of Aborocultural reports 11 certified arborists in Des Moines and 89 certified arborists statewide. Does the proposal, this is regarding the proposal that was submitted to you at the last workshop, does the proposal include adding staffing or use of existing staff? The answer is yes. The licensing enforcement proposal requires an additional part-time typist as well as full-time forestry staff that would be used to inspect on a part-time basis at an annual cost of $15,000. Are all members of the forestry team certified arborists? No, the municipal arborist and three out of the 10 forestry tree trimmers are certified, so we have four on staff present. Next question, is there any data or information available from other communities that have established similar ordinances regarding increased costs for services? No data is available that we've been able to locate there. Could there be a city penalty for failure to meet the state chemical licensing requirement? The city's municipal arborist would investigate on a complaint basis and issue administrative fines as needed. How would the ordinance be enforced? This is in regards to the proposed tree licensing ordinance that we outlined at the last workshop. We had mentioned three different options. Option number one was the full enforcement approach, and that would, there would be two aspects there, enforcing the license standard, which requires having an ISA sort of an arborist onsite, as well as the aborocultural standards, so it's both licensing requirement as well as the standards of the work that's performed. The second option was not that as extensive. It would simply look at enforcement of the license standard. There would be no inspection of the aborocultural standards. And option three was an education option. Wherein the city would initiate training in public service, so there wasn't really an enforcement option with that. Option four was to take no action at all. So there was a variance or variant, a variety of different enforcement approaches in what was recommended. How can option one be achieved step by step over the next three years? It's outlined here in the letter, I won't go through those, but there is a way that you could gradually introduce that option number one, which was the full enforcement option over a period of years, if you so desire. Next question, can cost estimates be developed to implement the alternatives presented? The answer is yes, they're listed here. Option one is $21,000. I would hazard a guess that in the beginning, particularly the first year or two of a new enforcement strategy like that, it would probably consume a fairly extensive amount of staff resources, so it's really not accounted for here. What's accounted for here would be more the cash outlay, but it would impact existing staff resources and the allocation of time. That same would be true for option two, to a slightly less extent, and then option three is the education option. There would be about a $4,000 outlay there if we were to go that approach. Okay, next set of questions, or the next question had to do with Des Moines Waterworks Park planning update. The question is, Des Moines Waterworks partnering with the Iowa Greenways Initiative? The answer is that Des Moines Waterworks has had representatives on the Greenway Committee, so the answer is yes. NFC, Neighborhood Finance Corporation, annual update, what is Des Moines' commitment to the extension of the 28E agreement, a three-year or five-year term? We're currently in year five of what was originally a three-year agreement. That doesn't make sense, we're in year five of what was originally a three-year agreement, but then it was extended to five years. I think the sense of the council, when this question came up before, is you'd like us to expedite the approval of that so we could give some predictability to NFC. We are prepared to do that. Once the council has provided some direction on the capital, budget, and our bond funding amounts, we'll be able to proceed with that agreement. Also, another question on NFC, what is the size of loans on new construction, existing home improvements? New construction loans are typically about $100,000. Loans to purchase existing homes, obviously, are less. They range from $86,000 to $93,000. The NFC, as you might know, also does forgivable loans that average in the range of $9,900 to $12,300 for the existing homes. Then on home improvement loans, those amounts are $11,850 to $12,700, and there's also a forgivable loan component as part of that that averages between $3,600 and $4,800. We're getting to the end of this here. What is the balance of loans between the city, county, and lenders? The balance of loans, there's about 1,458 loans with an outstanding balance of $67,432,500. There is a forgivable loan component as part of that, that's 600 that are outstanding right now with a balance of $5.5 million. Then on the budget, we talked about increasing the city's general fund reserve. You might recall that discussion. The question came up, how would that relate to our current outstanding reserve amount? The answer is, the in assigned general fund reserve would go up to $13.5 million, which brings us up to about 10% of annual expenditures, which is about the target that we're trying to get to. What is the latest percent of tax-exempt properties in the city of Des Moines? We went to the city assessors page, and they do have values in therefore tax-exempt properties. Tax-exempt properties do not include government-owned properties. The tax-exempt percentage of our total base is about 11%, 11.3%. We do not have a number that reflects the value of government-owned property, at least that's current from the assessor's office. So I would suggest on this particular point, you give us a chance to do a bit more research to come back with a number that would include both assessed or taxes-exempt properties as well as government. Next question, again on the budget, what is the majority of the shortfall for FY13-14? About $5 million of the shortfall is projected for FY13 and about $2.2 million for FY14, so the total is 7.2. $5 million in the first year, 2.2 in the second. Could we publish the December 15 public meeting date as soon as possible? Yes, press releases went out, letters went out last week, and so the invitations and notices for that public town hall meeting on December 15 have been sent. And then, on the 15th, there are two sessions that day to talk about the budget. One would be held over the lunch hour beginning at 11:30, and the one in the evening would begin at 6:00 p.m. Both of these will be at the Central Library downtown. And, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that concludes a quick overview of questions and answers to budget workshop questions.
Anybody have any questions for information, clarification? Seeing none, let's move on then to the budget update.
Well, Mayor and council, I'm going to do the presentation from down here at the podium today, and we have a fairly extensive presentation. There is a packet in front of you that outlines all of the slides that we prepared for the budget overview today. I'm not going to try to talk about every word on all these pages. We'll try to do an overview and keep this moved along, but there is a lot of material. I would like to make a few comments at the beginning of this, and that is that, just to refresh remembering, and we just talked about it, we have about a $7.2 million shortfall in our budget. We are continuing to look at a two-year budget, as we've been talking about. We are recommending $4.3 million in expense reductions, and we are, for the first time in 10 years, recommending a modest increase in the tax rate of about .46. That .46 increase in the tax rate is about a 2.8% on the total rate that we have right now, and one of the themes that we'll be talking about today was why do that? What's the purpose of doing a tax increase? Well, the answer is, in so many words, that if we attempt to, in our judgment, make all of the expense reductions necessary to close that entire gap, we'll be making cuts within the organization that are quite negative in terms of our ability to deliver services to the general public. I should tell you, for the almost little over six years that I've been city manager, every year that I've submitted a budget to you, we've been talking about expense reductions. The cumulative effect of all those expense reductions today is about $24 million. So we've cut about $24 million out of a general fund budget, which is a little over $160 million. That is a huge number, and I would tell you that the cuts that we're making this year that we're recommending are, I think, the most difficult ones that we've had to come to grips with. The number that we're talking about is not as big as it was two years ago, last year. Two years ago was about $11 million, this is less this time, but the fact that we're making more cuts on top of prior cuts in prior years has made this particular process more difficult and more challenging. Two things I want to say about the presentation and the recommendations that you're going to hear, the first is that all of these recommendations were the product of an intensive team effort. All of the departments of the city were involved in this process. I don't think there's a person on the staff that relishes the idea of making further cuts, particularly when you're impacting employees or service levels that we know people are dependent upon. But I will also tell you, in the same breath, that although the process is difficult and the recommendations aren't happy ones necessarily, the quality of the work that you're going to see here, I think, is very, very high. The recommendations are very thoughtful. The staff spent a lot of time trying to put together recommendations that made sense that minimized impact on the public. The second thing I want to say about the work you're going to see here is that we did really rely, to a large extent, on the input that we got from the public at our town hall forums. There were other methods that the public gave us information, we've utilized those as well. And I must say also that a lot of the comments and suggestions that came from you, from the mayor and council, have been integrated into this proposal, not just the ones that we've received over the last couple of months or so, but over the last year or so. We try to pick up those suggestions that you've made and reflect those in the recommendations that you're going to see here. So let's begin here. Just a little bit of history, if you look at things that you've done in the past to balance our budget, there have been a number of things that have gone on. I'm not going to talk about all these. All the information is here, though. There's been privatization efforts, partnerships, we talked about the zoo and botanical center, really wonderful cooperation from our employee groups who virtually have all stepped forward and said, "Look, we're willing to make some reductions in what our employee compensation is." That has been very helpful to us. We've made a number of changes in health insurance. The decision to go self-insured was one that saved a lot of money. You'll see others listed here as well. You've basically, through the actions that you've taken in recent years, you've met the challenge. You've always had a balanced budget between fiscal year '07 and fiscal year '12. You cut about $24 million out of the general fund. Another interesting stat, if you look back 10 years or so, 10 years within the city operation, we've cut about 275 positions, full-time positions within city government over that period of time. And the other thing that's important to note, although we're talking about a modest rate increase in the taxes this year, over the last 10 years, you've essentially maintained the rate of taxation here in the city. And I would say our process has been very open and transparent. At the same time that we've done this work, which has been difficult and challenging for the organization and the community, the city as a place to live and work has done exceedingly well. I think you're all aware that, I think, there's maybe been a couple dozen different awards that we've received. A couple are mentioned here. Forbes listed Des Moines as one of the best cities for young professionals. Kiplinger had the city as among the top 10 best cities for the next decade. Both of those were within the last year. There's been about $2 billion worth of construction downtown, both public and private. In the overall satisfaction, based on our customer satisfaction surveys from our citizens, places Des Moines at a very high level. And you'll see some of the other things here, a lot of grant funds, the recent Rays Lake announcement, really extraordinary response to two major floods that we've had in '08 and '10, and lots of snow that we've had, and all these things we've managed to do in a time period when we've been cutting budgets a lot. And also, AAA bond rating, not too bad a thing to accomplish in the middle of all that. This time, the challenge on our budget is a little bit different. In past years, our property tax revenues have generally been flat, sometimes increasing a little bit based on the valuations that have occurred, but this particular year, we're looking at fairly significant reductions in assessed values in the city. For FY13, $159 million of reductions in taxable valuations, that translates to about $2.3 million in lost tax revenues. One of the interesting things about declining values is when you look downtown, the major office buildings in downtown Des Moines have had a reduction of 28% of their values over the last two years alone. Residential values have reduced about 3.4%, but as you know, the impact of the rollback tends to compensate for that loss on the residential side. There is no such phenomenon going on on commercial properties, so the reduction in commercial values translates to a real reduction in tax revenues. Other kinds of revenues that we get, interest income, for example, or building permit revenue, those are down as well. Here's a sort of interesting data. If you look at the 10 largest properties downtown, and these are essentially the larger office complex, the two bars on the left show you the value of those properties. So in 2009, the value of the 10 largest properties in downtown Des Moines was about $347 million. Two years later, by 2011, that number had been reduced to $282 million. That's a loss of $65 million in values, just over a two-year period. Now, that impacts our general fund, it also impacts your TIF. Look at the box on the right. That shows you the actual tax revenues that have been lost as a result of that decline in values, and it's about $1 million. So $1 million of lost revenue over two years from just 10 major properties in downtown Des Moines.
Rick, can I ask you a question on that? The assessed value, it's my understanding that the assessed value, then, for these larger properties, or for all of the commercial buildings downtown, it was a 28% decrease across the board, correct?
Yeah, Mrs. Hensley, that's the information we have, that the assessor looked at office building down. You tend to think that the vacant office buildings would be the ones that realized the biggest reduction, but when they went through the assessment process, my information is that they applied that reduction to all buildings. So whether it was occupied or vacant, they basically assigned a market value and said it's reduced 28%.
So even those buildings, the Nationwide, the Principals, the INGs, whatever, that are 100% occupied, they reap the benefit of the 28% decrease?
That's my understanding.
I guess at some point, I'd like to have some discussion about, is that a fair and equitable way to go about it, or should it be done on a building-by-building basis?
Right, we'd love to have that discussion. Okay, so let's take a look at our general fund and the process that's before us right now. Again, the gap is $7.2 million. We did follow a number of guiding principles as we put this together, again, it's a two-year budget. We were very adamant, as we did the work internally, to make sure that when there are service impacts, that we need to know what those are and identify those, so that as we go forward, there's no mistaking the impact of the expense reductions that we're going to make. Reoccurring savings are essential. We can't use one-time savings to balance the budget. New revenues must be certain and ongoing, a similar kind of principle, but applied to the revenue side of the equation. And then departments, as they went through the process and looking at cuts, they all identified cuts that were more than they knew they would have to take, but this way we had some flexibility to sort of organize the cuts to minimize the impact on public safety. So we're going to start talking about some of the cuts, but a couple of things, again, as we did the work here, if there was any theme that came from the public forums and from discussion at this table and from the public, it is that there is a huge need out there to minimize the impact of expense reductions on public safety. And I would say, as a general rule, public safety would be police and fire, but I must say, there are elements of our operation in public works and in engineering that would probably fall into the same category, so we were mindful of that as well. And also, as we talk about these, we're going to try to identify the service reductions that are part of the actual expense reduction, but we're also going to try to identify for you in the five major departments that are responsible for service delivery, if we were to make additional cuts, what would that look like? What would the impacts be if we were to make expense reductions beyond what we're recommending here? So first, I want to kind of quickly talk about the reductions that are recommended here in the administration and development sectors of the city government. Not entirely, but for the most part, these reductions are ones that generally wouldn't impact the public. They wouldn't seem so much, at least initially. They would perhaps in the long term. Responses might be a bit slower on some areas, but generally speaking, these cuts are more of an internal thing. They'll impact service delivery, but indirectly. And you'll see, and just for the sake of time, I'm not going to talk about each one of these, but there are cuts listed here for virtually every department in the administration and development sectors of our government, clerk, city manager, community development, engineering, finance, human resources, human rights, information technology, legal, and mayor and council. I now want to, I'm going to have some department directors step up and talk about the cuts. I mentioned the five major departments, so this would be parks, police, fire, public works, library. Those five departments really constitute the major service delivery components of our operation. Each of these departments has stepped up and is making cuts here, but again, we tried to minimize impacts within the public safety arena. Now, as the department director comes forward, they're going to be looking at cuts above the line. Those are the ones with the numbers in front of them, so you can see here in Park and Rec. Those are the ones that we're recommending. The below-the-line are cuts that were identified and discussed but not accepted, at least from the staff perspective. So the below-line cuts are ones that we're not recommending, but we're listing them here, and each director is going to talk about that a little bit to give you a sense of what would happen if we were to make additional cuts within our organization. So with that, I've asked, by the way, I've asked each director to do sort of a brief overview. I know you'll have a lot of question on these. They will be available, obviously, after the presentation and further meetings down the line, but today, we're trying to give you a sense of what the recommendations are and the impacts of further cuts if they would occur. So we're going to start with Park and Rec and Don Trip.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to first be discussing reductions which appear above the line. These city manager recommendations come from my proposals. My proposals were prepared through the input of park staff, from the park board, friends of Parks Foundation, previous survey work we've done, and of course, the recent town hall meetings. We tried to comply with the need to reduce while still maintaining the highest demand services, and we've looked for organizational efficiencies while taking advantage of already open positions. The first reduction you can see is in cemeteries. We propose an increase to fully outsource mowing. We have sufficient confidence through our mowing contract experience in parks to date that this can be expanded to cemeteries and will provide the necessary service levels. Also, our maintenance crews in cemeteries that manage seven cemeteries today work in two locations. They will be consolidated to one location under one supervisor and will be managed with parks to allow for cross-training and sharing of necessary backup resources. In the area of customer service, we currently have two customer service locations, one at Laurel Hill and one at Glendale. We'll be continuing the Glendale on a full-time basis, and Laurel Hill will be open by appointment only. We have found through our own studies that the Laurel Hill office building has only intermittent use, just a few people a day stopping in there, and that those customers that are coming are not really there for sales activities, but really to look for the burial sites of loved ones. There is technology available today that will allow us to install a kiosk at Laurel Hill so visitors can locate loved ones through full-time, without full-time staff being on-site. This technology is also available online, so people can get this information before they come to the cemeteries, which would eliminate the need for that staffing on a full-time basis. The second area of reduction is in recreation, and in this area, we look to the lowest-use facilities or services that have a relatively high cost. Therefore, we are proposing changes to the schedule for birdland pool because the use at this pool is rather low compared to other aquatics facilities. We're not talking about closing birdland, but our recommendation is to reduce the subsidy of birdland through a reprogramming of this pool. There are multiple ways that we believe we can do this, but primarily, we'd like to meet with the neighborhood, get their feedback as to the appropriate schedule. Some of the things that we think we can do is continue with our afternoon hours, because that's when most of the use comes, and use the early evenings and evenings for additional swim lesson programs, which is in high demand right now and not available anywhere in the metro area, and for additional fee-based recreation services such as water aerobics, rentals for private parties, and the use of the pool for competitive swim meets and the like. Some of you also know that we're in the midst of remodeling and rebuilding McHenry Park. Our plan through the capital program there is to install another water facility in McHenry Park, having those water play features that are free, by the way, and lower costs because they don't provide, they don't necessarily require staffing. At Union Park and at McHenry Park, we think will serve that neighborhood well. But again, we'll meet with the neighborhood to try to find the best schedule. The third area is something that we title facilities, includes a number of different areas, but primarily, this comes because of some previous good work that's been done. This includes a reduction in utility costs, for instance. We have new energy improvements already implemented, including the new energy-efficient windows here at City Hall and the police station, a new energy-efficient roof with the armory installed already, new heating and air conditioning systems at community centers and the police academy, and we're going to benefit from that savings this year. As I had mentioned earlier, we're taking advantage of already open positions. We're trying to limit the number of layoffs that are necessary with this cut. We have two retirements in the area of skilled trades support, and we won't be filling these positions this year. The impact will potentially be less timely completion of building and park improvement projects, but I really believe that with good prioritization, we can get the most essential work completed. The final recommendation above the line, therefore recommended by the city manager, is in the area of parks. The first two of these are as a consequence of centralizing maintenance staff and the resulting savings we have to building utilities and operations. Also, we believe we can further reduce some cost of mowing through reducing mowing frequency in some select areas. In other words, less visible areas will be mowed less frequently. But I have to say that most of the savings in the area of parks is coming from a reduction in the number of staff dedicated to picking up trash and litter in the parks and moving barrels throughout the system, out of the park system. Today, we have about 400 trash barrels in the park system that are located next to buildings, and they're out in the open areas of parks. It's our intent to reduce that number of barrels to about 100, a reduction of 300, and embark on a public relations campaign to let the public know how expensive it is to take care of this trash problem in our parks. This is currently a very costly maintenance responsibility. Maybe it can be limited, if not eliminated, through better public understanding and a change in people's behavior. We can always be hopeful. Our Park and Recreation Board and our friends actually are very enthusiastic about taking on this project. It's something I think that's really needed in this city, to let people know that dumping their trash is actually costing them tax dollars. And at a time when we're so strapped and we're having such a difficult fiscal time, it really seems like a waste of resources. So that completes the areas above the line, again, recommended by the city manager. The areas below the line are cuts that are not recommended but would be required if you ask for additional cuts from the Park and Recreation Department. These are cuts that, in my view, would impact the momentum the city has as a great place to live, work, and locate a family or business. The city manager previously mentioned that we've been winning many awards. I have to say that the Park and Recreation staff and our great volunteers take a lot of pride in the contributions that our Parks and Recreation Department has made to winning these awards. You can see by looking at these items that it would require the reduction or elimination of a number of programs, including youth and adult sports, special events, and outdoor recreation. It would likely also require closing aquatic facilities, not just reducing hours, and closing community centers, and maybe even parks. You know, I think not only will this detract from Des Moines' appearance, but like many of the other cuts, I really believe it breaks the promise that we have with our citizens and a number of donors who count in the city to compliment their personal investment on their property and their gifts to parks. Great strides in our community image could be compromised if we take these cuts. Thank you for the few moments to explain these reductions.
We are now going to hear from Chief Kep.
Thank you, manager. Mayor, member-
Mayor, Members of Council, John Kip, Chief of the Fire Department. Before addressing the proposed reductions, I'd like to make a few comments to provide a greater understanding of the process leading to today's presentation. In the past three years, the department's authorized strength has been reduced 22 positions from 311 to 289, with three remaining positions frozen. We have eliminated a ladder truck, a fire engine, but have added back one medic company. These actions have been managed with a reduced number of support sections and in a community with all-time highs for calls for service and one that has grown through annexation. The reductions above the line will result in the lowest authorized strength ever voted on by current members of the council or been experienced by any current member of the department. While citizens often relate to the Fire Department by identifying with their neighborhood fire station, the department is a citywide response system. During an emergency, responding units roll from more than one location and not just the fire station down the street. Additionally, when a person calls 911, we send the closest available unit, regardless of the home location for that unit. Every sworn employee performs multiple roles of prevention, firefighting, serving on specialty teams, and providing EMT basic or paramedic care, with over half of our employees certified to the paramedic level. One measure of the level of the protection and response chosen by the council is the Insurance Service Office, or ISO rating. This rating is one of the tools used in the insurance industry to determine local insurance rates for residents and businesses. With the one being the best and 10 being the worst, the city has held a rating of three for many decades. Within our overall rating, we have lost ground in recent years, but we are buoyed by a very strong water supply system and current and proposed efforts towards facilities and training. Our current rating score includes pre-fiscal year 11 department reduction data. Turning your attention to the bullets above the line, expanding the scheduling period for physicals and treadmills will realize a savings of $57,300. A reduction of $21,000 will come as a result of assigning a lieutenant versus assigning a captain to supervise single-unit fire stations. For most of our history, this assignment has been filled by a lieutenant, and this is consistent with the job specification for a lieutenant. This reduction is achieved through attrition, that is through the retirement of captains. Reduction of $530,000 includes the elimination of one medic company and its corresponding fire medic and senior fire medic positions, or six positions. These reductions are achieved through layoff or demotion. Because we are able to move paramedics and to move equipment, the arrival time of advanced EMS care will not change. However, with one fewer ambulance, the arrival time of the transporting ambulance may be impacted. As I had stated earlier, those calling for service receive the closest available unit versus one from a set location. The specific ambulance to be removed from service has not been finalized, but will be determined based on call experience, geographic distribution, and anticipated changes in where those calls for service come from. While the options below the line could be used to reach a budgetary target, I do not recommend that you choose them because of their impacts to service. The first, the first $264,000 represents the next three sworn positions. At this level, we lose the predictability of what the citywide system looks like each day, and it illustrates how sharp our pencil has become in providing service. On a daily basis, shift commanders may brown out or remove from service responding units based on staffing. The next line, the engine, is actually a reduction of $88,000. That is the position reduction that would trigger elimination of that engine. It is at this level, I cannot say with confidence that we would be in a position to maintain our ISO rating. I don't believe this council has ever had a conversation that close to how we measure our protection, but that is the position where I would lose confidence in our ability to maintain that rating. All the items below the line, continuing to the bottom, represent two engines, two medic units, and a fire station. To achieve these reductions would require not filling any retirements for the next two years, firing everyone in the current training academy, and firing most of those who attended the previous academy over three years ago. Neither the Fire Department nor the Council defines a level of safety regarding fire EMS. Based on available information, the Council determines a level of service, a level of response. I lead and manage that service, that response. The basic question following the choice of level of service and possible reductions is, should I feel safe? Here's my answer, both as the Fire Chief and as a resident of the city. I feel safe because I live in the city of Des Moines, first, and the men and women of the Des Moines Fire Department who protect me and my family are the very best. While I would not seek to reduce fire staffing, we can manage above the line. Fewer will provide more with less, but people should feel safe, and that should be your answer when asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We're now going to hear from Chief Bradshaw.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, Judy Bradshaw, Chief of Police. Before I get to my items, I just want to make four points, and I know the Manager has touched on those. Since 2008, when we look at where are we going to reduce this budget cycle, since 2008, I have eliminated seven police officer positions, five upper management positions, five. Those are my number two and my number three people. I didn't have that many to begin with, so I can tell you that that was difficult to make. Two police officers were eliminated from the airport. It saved the airline's money. I eliminated 22 administrative support positions, 22. These are folks that help put information together. In police work, you either solve the crime by being there at the scene and catching them in the act, which I can tell you is very difficult to do, or you take that information that you have after the fact, and you put that case together and you solve it. That's extremely difficult to do. That's what our detective bureau does. That's what these 22 folks did in these administrative positions. We're not the same police department that we were in 2008, and we're not more efficient, I can tell you that. We currently have nine police officer positions that are being funded by the 2010 COPS Hiring Grant, and I have six police officer positions that are frozen. As we looked at our cuts over the last three to four years, our goal is to maintain first responder service, being able to respond to calls for service when you call 911 or when you call our dispatch center. That is essential to the city of Des Moines in maintaining public safety. So these six police officer positions that are vacant are currently being experienced by our detective bureau. You will see, after this calendar year, the Uniform Crime Report will come out, we have dipped in our clearance rates or our ability to solve crimes. I attribute that directly to the cut or to the froze six police officer positions. I'm just like any other department. When you take resources away from a service, it's going to have impact on the citizens of Des Moines. When you take a look at where to go now, after we've touched every area within the police department, I looked at the one area that we had had no reductions over the last budget cycles, and that's our animal control services. I sat down with the Animal Rescue League, and they have agreed to work with us and to reduce their costs by $300,000. What that means is that we're going to be cutting back from five animal control officers to three, and we're also going to be looking at a reduction in the shelter hours. We're still going to have two shifts of animal control, but we're going to be reducing that time based on the reduction of personnel. The second area is a reduction in overtime by $186,000. What I'm doing there is I am reducing the on-call pay, those officers that are on-call, by half. Now, that may not seem like a big deal, but these officers that are on-call are on-call for those kinds of emergencies that patrol cannot handle. So in other words, an arson investigation. I don't have that expertise out on patrol. A rape, a child abuse case, a fatal accident. These are significant when you talk about having expertise out there to supplement the officers on patrol. But we think we can do it and maintain that level by reducing that in half. Now you get to recommendations that allows me to hit my target for this budget cycle, but I would not recommend it. The first one would be to eliminate our neighborhood-based service delivery. This is a very popular program, as you all know. However, these officers would go back to patrol because what we're talking about now is cutting frontline police officer positions. And in order to maintain our ability to respond to calls for service, the first standalone unit to eliminate would be the neighborhood-based service delivery. They handle the chronic problems. They handle the shop and saves, if you will, that, you know, you have an issue with, that you want to work with the neighbors with, and that neighborhood sergeant or police officer works with the businesses, works with the neighborhoods, and tries to eliminate that chronic problem that the beat officer, as they respond to these calls for service, they don't have the time for that kind of follow-up. The second area in order to meet our target is to eliminate the School Resource Officer Program. Currently, we have nine officers in all of our high schools, and we have three officers that float among the middle schools. Those officers would go back to patrol, and they would, all calls to the schools would just be made by patrol officers. What that does is that eliminates our ability to work with the principals and staff with that same officer and that continuity and that relationship to develop. It also eliminates our ability to work with the kids that are the top 10 violent or that we know are committing the majority of the crimes in our high schools. We're going to have a different officer responding to the schools, and they're not going to be as familiar as an officer that's there and they're assigned to that high school. Obviously, when you're familiar, you know who the good kids are that you're going to get information from, you know who the troubled kids are, and you have that ability to form that relationship with the school and with the kids and with their families. We would lose that if we pulled out of the high schools. And obviously, our response times to the high schools would be impacted because it would fall into the priority of other calls for service that would be fielded by our dispatch. Then the last area would be to eliminate our traffic unit. We have downsized this unit significantly over the last 15 years anyway. There is really not a midnight traffic squad. It's been reduced to nearly, I think, the three officers over there from time to time that do the OWI enforcement, that help with the expertise. Now, a lot of people think, "Traffic unit, well, that's just running radar." That's just a very small piece of it, and the traffic complaints. Our traffic unit offers immediate expertise out there on serious accidents and on fatal investigations, and that may not seem like a big deal unless it's your family member that's paralyzed from an accident. And there's a lot more of those that happen in the city of Des Moines that don't get the media play than what we may all be aware of. The fatal accidents, they offer that expertise. These folks would go back to patrol, and the way we would do this is we would still have a response team of experts who would go out and they would respond to these kinds of calls. But I can tell you that the patrol officers, there'd be an expectation that you handle those traffic accidents that have major injuries, and you would see a loss of efficiency and the quality in some of those investigations. Also, in our hit-and-run investigation, we would have to think through, how are we going to handle investigating the hit-and-run investigations in the city of Des Moines? Again, may not seem like a big deal unless it's your car that got hit and run, and now we're going to have to determine, how do we commit an officer to do that kind of investigation that is significant and it takes a while? I appreciate your attention this morning. I know we all have a difficult decision ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Bill Stowe.
Mayor, County, Members of the Council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Corporation Counsel, Bill Stowe, Public Works. I'm going to talk just very briefly about the approach we used when asked by the City Manager to provide operations and maintenance reductions, and then the outcome from our analysis, and it gets into this metaphor we're using of above and below the line, as I'm sure the Council realizes, but it may be a little bit more confusing to the general public. The above and below really go to the recommendations being made by the Council, I'm sorry, by the Manager today to the Council, which is above the line, and those additional reductions that are on deck, if you will, if neither the tax increase nor additional reductions are going to be necessary. So let me talk first about our approach and how we approached the request to eliminate what initially was a significantly larger number than the $539,000. Essentially, we are a department that's funded not by property taxes but by user fees, sanitary sewer fees, stormwater utility fees, and solid waste fees. However, in the accounting system that we follow, road use taxes are treated as a general fund account, and so we've been asked to make significant, in our view, significant reductions that address that nuance in how we account. And hence, we're making recommendations here based on our view of service. At the end of the day, the service above the line that we're proposing for reductions here will not result in significant, visible service depreciation to our residents. Seven people, however, who are loyal employees of this city will be laid off in that process, and I don't want to understate that. If we were to move to the below-the-line reductions, we are now getting into areas that are significant service reductions that will be, in our view, visible to the residents. I must say that trash will still be picked up, levee gates will still be closed, streets will still be plowed. All of those things are very important, as is our ability to respond to weather events in our business. We have a core business, and we have that piece that really is public safety-initiated involving weather events: snow and ice this time of the year, floods, and wind. Very important to our core process of responding. The three areas that will be touched by the recommendations made by the Manager to you today, we have an opportunity, based on a retirement, to reduce one position in our 24-hour call center. While that will not result in an immediate loss of service, it's a behind-the-desk kind of process where record-keeping will be implicated. An area that's somewhat painful for a number of us because it's suffered a death of 1,000 cuts is eliminating the sidewalk maintenance section. About five years ago, we began a process where we had 16 employees in this area that inspect, maintain, construct sidewalk through three or four different cuts. Now, finally, we will have no one left in that area, which I do believe has a significant implication on how we, as a community, deal with sidewalk-related issues. Fortunately, our friends in community development and engineering will pick up a portion of these functions and still provide support to the community. An area that typically we would not talk about because it's relatively transparent, but an area for significant opportunity of reduction in road use taxes, is $325,000 through the elimination of some four positions in our street cleaning area. This would essentially reduce the frequency of street cleaning from six times on residential streets per year to five times. I must say that any additional reductions beyond that raise issues for us about the maintenance of our stormwater sewer system as well as specific assurances that were given in our consent decree with the U.S. federal government and the state government about how we will maintain the system. In the event additional cuts are necessary, the areas beneath the line would, in my view, have significant long-term implications on residents of the city of Des Moines. And I liken it to, if you go out right now or at the end of the meeting, turn on your car, and you see a change service oil, service light on your vehicle. You can ignore that today, you can ignore that tomorrow, you might even be able to get away with ignoring it next week, but eventually, that warning will take heed. If we were to eliminate bridge maintenance services, reduce pothole patching, and reduce street tree trimming for many different reasons, we will have a significant long-term impact on our infrastructure in this city. The cuts that are being recommended to you today, including those in Public Works, are certainly not easy, particularly given trade-offs with tax increases. I very much appreciate that and certainly do not envy the position that you're in. I do believe, as Chief Kip said, that we can manage the above-the-line cuts, the below-the-line cuts, which are next on deck for additional reductions. If we have to reduce additional operations and maintenance expenses, it would be extremely painful for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We're now going to hear from Greg Heine.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members. We have come to these recommendations through input from the library staff and the community forums. For the past five years, previous administrations of the library system have cut operating funds by $1 million, which have included reduction of hours and the reduction of 10 staff members. Looking at the library budget with the deficit that is before us, I found that all line items or almost all of the line items items, or almost all of the line items, have been cut to basic or survival levels during these past five years. The only place that we can turn to for substantial savings is the reduction of staff, which will result in the direct reduction of hours and corresponding services. The reduction of $463,307 to the present allocation of city funding to the library would amount to the following proposals that I will be recommending to the library board of trustees. $17,000 will be for reduced staff training by 63% and cut all community institutional and professional memberships. What this means is that we will only be able to train staff in mandated areas and in areas where safety considerations. For the reduction of professional memberships, this will reduce our memberships to agencies throughout the city and professional memberships that all libraries maintain on the national level for information, resource sharing, et cetera. $19,000 will be reduced in cleaning and HVAC costs due to the reductions in hours of the different libraries, which I will get to in a moment. $427,000 will have to be reduced, which will amount to five full-time and four part-time staff members. With fewer employees, we find that we will need to close each library branch one day a week. This will be a reduction from 52 hours to 40 hours per week being open to the public. Each library will be closed on a different day of the week, such as, my recommendation will be the downtown library perhaps will be closed every Saturday. Then, when each library is closed, the staff members that would normally be working at that library that day will be deployed to the other branches to help out with staffing on the service desks. The Forest and Northside branches are currently only open 35.5 hours a week. So the plan that I will be proposing to the library board would be to bring up the hours of these two branches to 40 hours a week to establish parity and equity among the libraries throughout the city. In essence, what this does is this is the equivalent of closing one library branch without actually doing so. It will be sharing the burden across the city. But the loss of these staff hours and these staff people also equates to the loss of some services, because not all staff work solely at the public service desk. Each staff member is responsible for other services which are provided to the citizens. So the loss of these staff members will mean the elimination of computer classes for an average of 5,000 people. These are computer classes to help people find jobs, establish resumes, et cetera. We will also be reducing computer assistance to the public when they come into the library, because we won't have the staff to be able to do so. This will impact about 210,000 citizens who are searching for homework, searching for resumes, or for jobs, et cetera. We will be severely reducing outreach services, some of you know it by the name of Rosie, which will directly impact 25,000 youth who circulate about or check out about 50,000 items. These are youth that we go to to provide library service, because they cannot come to the library for one reason or another. We will be reducing research and foundation assistance to nonprofit organizations that come to the library that wish assistance to find grants, establish themselves, establish business plans, whatever. We will cease the digitization of city records, directories, and photographs for preservation, and we will no longer be able to index the Des Moines Register, or City View, or other local publications. We have about 50,000 people that come into the library every year to use our indexes for research, to gain information from these publications. We will be cutting adult programming by 60%, and we will be outsourcing a good deal of our books and other materials that we catalog and process ourselves. We will be looking to companies outside the library to do so. Now, speaking below the line, these are recommendations, these are not recommended by the city manager, but will be required if more funding is cut from the library budget. The reduction of $656,307 from the budget would result in nine full-time and eight part-time staff members being reduced from our budget. In addition to each library being closed one day a week, if this increased funding is cut from our budget, this will mean that branch hours, when we're open to the public, would be reduced from 12 and 11 hours of being open to the public to eight and nine hours of being open to the public. Sunday hours at Central would have to be looked at as well. We may have to amend those hours. The three services that would be directly impacted if more funding was cut from our budget would be, summer reading programs would be cut. This impacts about, or approximately, 10,500 children who would not have summer reading to encourage them to read during the summer. Studies show that taking part in summer reading classes leads to increased school readiness and also increased memory retention from one school year to another. The children wouldn't have this opportunity for them. The second item that would be cut from the budget would be, children's story hours would be reduced 65%, impacting about 22,500 children. These story hours are not essentially telling a story as much as they are helping with literacy, helping with education, assisting in the development of literacy and social readiness for schools, and assisting in the progress of reading skills for the children. The last item that would be reduced, that we would be looking at, would be reducing programs for teen and at-risk youth by 95%. This would be reducing our programs. Now, we facilitate an average of 300 programs, we would be reducing that to 12. The result would be impacting 13,500 teens and youth in the city. They would not have a place that they would come to where they could interact that would be a safe place, that would be an encouraging place and a nurturing place. So if the 11% is cut from our budget, this would be a great impact on library services to youth and teens in the community. Thank you very much for listening to me. Mr. City Manager?
Here is a summary of the expense reductions by department. You'll see on the left column where it says reduction target, that was the initial target that departments were asked to provide recommendations on. The middle column, called proposed budget reduction, is what we're recommending in terms of an expense reduction. Those are the numbers we just talked about. Then on the far right, proposed FTE, full-time equivalent employees. Those are the number of positions within each department that would be eliminated by virtue of this recommendation, should the council approve it. So the total number of positions impacted, full-time equivalent, is about 42. Of those 42, we estimate, this number can change a little bit, about 13 would be actual layoffs. 13 individuals would be laid off as a part of this process. Here's just maybe a different way to look at the recommendations that we have just made. On the left side is the operating budget by service area. Four basic areas within city government, public safety is the biggest, that now expands about 51% of the total general fund budget. Then you see the purple, infrastructure and development is about 21%. General administration services, 14%, community enrichment, 14%. Now, look at the pie chart on the right. That shows you how the reductions have been allocated among those four areas. So you can see, for example, in public safety, a little over $1 million, but that's 25% of the cuts as opposed to the fact that they're 51% of the total budget. So that's telling you that the cuts within public safety were relatively less compared to the balance of the organization. Conversely, infrastructure and development took 24% of the cuts compared to the fact that they're 21% of the budget. General admin services and development accounted for 21% of the cuts, they're 14% of the budget, and community enrichment was 39% compared to the 14% that they are in the budget. Excuse me, that's 30%, not 39. So, a recap. Budget cap, about $7.2 million. We've just outlined recommendations to you that would reduce expenses by $4.3 million. There's a gap of $2.9 million. It would take a 46 cent increase in the tax rate in order to balance the budget. Now, revenue proposals, there are some other revenues that the city receives that the council could, if you choose, allocate to the budget. They're listed here as best we can. These numbers are, I would say, at this point in the process, not final, but they're pretty close. The total of these revenue enhancements is about $680,000. I do want to point out at the top of the list, red light and speeding camera enforcement revenue of $200,000. Some would say maybe that number should be larger. The reason it's $200,000 and not a bigger number is, our best judgment is that that revenue stream will decrease as you go forward. As the public becomes educated and those revenues drop, the number would be somewhere in the nature of $200,000 a year. So that's what we have shown here as a potential revenue stream on an ongoing basis. Other fee increases, EMS fee increases, $200,000, cemetery sales and recreation income increases $100,000, special event fee allowance reduced to 50, it's now $1,000. So for special events, it would be, we would provide $250 of, in effect, free services instead of $1,000. That generates an additional $68,000 of revenue. And you can see on down the list. So $680,000 of potential revenues that could be pledged. If you took all of those revenues and you said, "Well, let's apply that to reduce the amount of tax increase," it would be about 11 cents. 11 cents. So let's take a look at what kind of impact that would have. Again, here are the same numbers you saw a moment ago, but expenditure reductions of $4.3 million, revenue enhancements, $680,000. Optional tax rate increase would now be 35 cents instead of 46. The tax increase would generate about $2.2 million, and that would close your gap of $7.2 million. Your resulting tax rate under that formulation, 35 cent increase, would be $16.93. This is just an option. It would be something that you could decide to do. You could do other things with those revenues. This shows you what would happen if you use those additional revenues to reduce the rate of the tax increase. A lot of information on this page. This shows you the impact of the 46 cent increase in taxes. And essentially, I'm not going to try to take out all these numbers, but if you look at the two lines at the top of the page, off to the left, under FY10, you'll see the valuation of one downtown property. That's the solid blue line. This is an existing property downtown, $70,860,000 is the value of that one property. And then if you see to the right end of that line for FY13, the value has been reduced to $53,570, again, one property. The dash line right below that shows you the tax bill that that property would pay to the city now. This doesn't include the county or the school tax portion, just the city. So the tax bill for that property is being reduced, even with the 46 cent increase, from $1,174,000 to $913,000. So the point being made here is that because of the decline in commercial values, that even with the increase in tax rate, commercial properties are paying less. The other lines down through there simply show you two other properties, existing properties downtown, and how the decline in values is impacting their tax bill when compared to the tax rate increase. Now, the downtown is a bit unique. If you look at commercial properties outside of the downtown and ask the same question, that's what this somewhat complicated graphic shows you. It's the same kind of data. Let's take an example. The two lines at the very top, the top solid line is one commercial property outside the downtown area. In FY10, it had a value of $312,000. In FY13, that property will be valued at $284,000, so the value's dropped. Their tax bill in FY10, $5,172. In FY13, the value is $4,842, so less than what it was in FY10. And the other lines are simply two other properties to give you an idea. Now, this is the 46 cent increase. If it's 35 cent increase, the numbers will look about the same, but slightly less on the right side. This is a residential tax bill, including the 46 cent increase. The residents don't come out quite as well as commercial, as you'll see from this example in FY10. Here's a property in Des Moines, single-family home valued at $110,000, paying a tax bill of $836, again, just the city of Des Moines. FY13, same value, $113,000, actually increased a little bit. The tax bill is $977. Somebody, when I was going through and talking to each of you individually, you were asking me about the impact of the city's residential tax bill over a period of time. So we went back to FY05, fiscal year 2005, and plotted on this chart the amount of tax bill that the average residential home in Des Moines is paying. And you'll see on this graph, that's illustrated by the blue line, sort of a jagging going up and down there. The red line is the CPI, Consumer Price Index. What this is telling us is that the CPI in the city's tax bill has increased at almost the same rate. Not exactly the same in some of the middling years there, but in 2005 compared to 2012, the rate of increase on the CPI has been almost exactly the same on average over that period of time with the increase in the residential tax bill, which I would say is a pretty good accomplishment on your part, because you've had imposed upon you a lot of external costs that you had no control over, but you've managed to maintain the tax bill payment for our residents. It's always kind of good to remember the different actions that have taken place at the federal and state level and how they've impacted our decisions here. The bulleted points at the top are some of the things that have occurred at the state and federal level that have had a profound effect or may have a profound effect upon us. The governor's commercial rollback proposals. Obviously, any proposal that reduces revenues, given this situation that we've just described for you, is going to have quite a negative impact on our ability to deliver services. The state pension fund, the contribution requirements, obviously impacting us, the loss of federal funding, ADA settlement cost, the EPA, DNR consent decree, that was the $240 million sewer program for clean water compliance that has been imposed. Those are all rather significant impacts upon your budgetary obligations. The bullets at the bottom that talk with the dollar numbers, this goes back a number of years, but these are actions taken by the state of Iowa that have impacted us in terms of the loss of revenues. So you can see with those things you may not have remembered, personal property, tax replacement, population allocation, bank franchise, machinery and equipment tax, all of those actions were taken by the state that have resulted in loss of revenue to the city, about $8 million. Lack of diversified revenues, we've talked about this over and over. It is really the single most problematic aspect of our finances. We're far too reliant upon the property tax. This pie chart shows you that, and it's noted on the right that 95% of the state's cities, municipalities have a sales tax, local option sales tax that are used to support local services. We don't have that here in Des Moines. The road ahead, what are some of the things that we believe we're going to have to continue to focus on in the near future? They are listed here, municipal service center. The council and the mayor have been remarkably supportive of this particular endeavor. It is something that we believe is extremely important for us to find a way to continue on with, and we intend to bring that recommendation forward primarily in the context of the capital budget. Flood protection improvements, also extremely important for the city, given the frequency of flooding that we're now experiencing on our rivers. The lack of action in this area will have a long-term negative impact on the city, so we've got to find a way, in our view, to address that issue. Gaming revenues, gaming revenues have been used to, great success by the council, to pay for bridge and street repairs. We recommend that you continue to allocate the dollars in that fashion. You recently extended your agreement with Polk County and Prairie Meadows to allow that to happen for another seven or eight years. So that will be a revenue stream that we continue to think should be allocated the way you have in the past. Strong economic development, you know, one of the things that is hard for people to do, particularly in times of budgetary stretches, stress, is to focus on economic development. And I would tell you that one of the current discussions, current projects that you're struggling with, the Hampton Hotel, people will talk about, "Well, why are you taking that on when you've got so many money problems?" Hampton Hotel is a moneymaker. The reason you're taking it on is because you're going to make more money than you put into it. All of the revenues that go into Hampton Hotel come from revenues that that project generates itself. It is not a drain on your budgets right now. In fact, it is something that will help you in the long-term base. It doesn't help you in the short term, but it certainly does help you in the long term. Streetlight rates, something that came up in our public forum. We pay a lot of money, I think it's around $3 million for streetlights. Excuse me, there is a tariff that exists that establishes the streetlight rates. Our suggestion, we've talked to the city attorney a bit about this, is that we would urge you to take a look at providing some testimony intervention into the rate case when it goes before the Iowa Utility Board, so the city's interests can be reflected in that process. And last but not least, UPS early payment, you'll recall an action before you, recently, about the UPS payment that basically cancels out that agreement. So there's good news and bad news. The good news, you got a chunk of change, I think it was five or six million. Bad news is, we Bad news is we lose the payment taxes, payment lieu of taxes that were coming to the city from UPS. Our recommendation here is not to spend all that money, but to rather use it as sort of an operating endowment that can supplement or pay for that loss of pilot revenue, but also sort of bankroll it and use it to perhaps support some other internal enterprise accounts like parking. So summary, this is really the last piece, but here are the six or seven points that, in my view, are the most important things that we've talked about. Number one, you've already taken action to reduce 24 million dollars of expenses from FY 07 through 2012. This recommendation today, if you would accept it, and obviously you have a lot of work to do before you get to that point, but if you would, that's another 4.3 million. So you'd be at 28 million dollars of expense reduction in a general fund that has about 160 million dollars. That's 18%. 18% is a lot of money out of a general fund budget when you're essentially tasked to provide essential services. 275 jobs have already been eliminated from 2002 through 2012. We're talking about another 38 if you would accept this recommendation. That's 313 full-time jobs we had back basically about 10 years ago, just under 2019. 56 employees, we're now at about 1643 or would be with this recommendation. That's a 16% reduction. This recommendation worked very hard to maintain essential public services, police, fire, public works, a few other areas, but essentially those three areas. And what you've seen with the presentation here is that the brunt of the cuts have really fallen into areas like parks, administration, libraries, those functions of the city, which although important, don't rise to the same level as public safety, and that's why the recommendation is tilted in that direction. Further cuts beyond what we've recommended here, in our view, would have a deleterious effect on our ability to provide essential services that our citizens want. I'm not going to go through all these. We've been at this a long time, but the modest increase in the tax rate, if not more than 46 cents, is recommended to avoid some really bad effects if you want to make cuts beyond that amount. And we've listed a number of stats here that relate to the tax increase. Two final comments. The state legislation is still confronting us in terms of changes that might be made that would affect your budget, but assuming those things don't happen in a negative way, we've got a balanced budget for two years if this recommendation is adopted. But my last comment is that we should continue efforts in every way that we can to find ways to work with our state legislature to figure out ways to diversify our revenues. Mayor and council, that concludes our presentation today. I'm happy to answer questions, as is the staff. And obviously, a lot of this is new, a lot of information here, we'd be happy to address while we can today. And then if you want additional sessions, we'd be happy to discuss at that time as well.
Well, Mr. Manager, I know that everybody probably has a need to try to digest it, but I'll ask any of the council, do you have any initial questions today that might help us in our deliberations on these issues? Anybody? Start over here. Mr. Coleman?
I know we don't have a lot of time and we want some public comment, but I compliment you for this. This is hard news to deliver, and I appreciate your summary at the end. I am proud that as a council and people have come and gone, but over the last 13 years, our tax levy is lower than it was when I first came on the job 13 years ago. And even though you're proposing a lot of cuts, I don't want it to miss that we always start the year with a balanced budget and we finish on budget. We're talking about planning right now, not in the middle of a problem. And I think sometimes the media and our citizens have a hard time understanding how preoccupied we get with situations that might be 24 months out, but we have to start planning for it right now. I appreciate your presentation. I have a lot of very specific questions, but one thing that I would ask is how soon can we and the public that are interested get kind of the 40,000-foot? Here's where our total revenues before, here's where our total revenues, you know, would be this year for the overall city budget. I saw the amount of cuts, but that would be helpful to me, just kind of understanding the scope. And I think sometimes people think, "Oh, well, you're calling it a 3% cut," but that's because you had a forecast that did 10% increase, so, you know, that's the way it happens in DC, I think. So I'd like to see that kind of spreadsheet sometimes.
I think we're working on it, and I'm going to ask Scott Sanders to give you more detail.
Right. And in order to give you that total estimate, obviously, we're dealing with several hundred variables of line items. So I'd give us another week.
Okay.
Maybe 10 days on the long end to be able to come back to you with those more detail, if you will. But obviously, we focused our time on the largest of the revenues and the largest of expenditures. We feel pretty comfortable about that.
Just two other questions that I'd like, and I know we can wait for details later. One is, the state legislature and the governor have really been on a course for trying to change the way commercial property is taxed. And you talked a lot about it. I just find it so ironic that even though nobody has listened to us for a couple of years on this subject, even with the tax increase, the corporate rate is going to go down and the residential rate is going to go up. And every time they talk about commercial tax cuts, what they're really talking about is a residential increase. And I'd just like to see how it plays out in our budget. You know, the irony that we have to raise taxes, how much total money is going to come from residential taxpayers when we raise it 35 or 46 or whatever eventually happens? As opposed to, how much has the corporate tax gone down in downtown? It just feels to me like a shift to the people in town that are least capable of paying for it.
Mr. Coleman, we'd be happy to generate some data. We did a lot of analysis in the legislative session last year. Mayor was involved in a lot of that. We'd be happy to dig that out and sort of relate it to the recommendation you've got here today.
And the last thing I'd say is, I don't want you to discount the fact that I think in most of our neighborhoods, our parks are a public safety place, and I'd like to continue to look at the kinds of cuts that we're looking there because I don't think we can, I don't think we, I think they fit in my definition of public safety, and I don't disagree with some things about the library. And I'd like to tear into those cuts a little bit more.
All right.
Ms. Hensley?
I'd just like to commend, this is one of the best presentations I think I've ever seen the staff give as it relates to the budget. I mean, it's just absolutely excellent. You've anticipated a lot of the questions and information that we would typically be asking, but at the same time, it's probably one of the most depressing budgets that I think we've ever had, too, just in looking at what's ahead of us and the decisions that we have to make. I've got just a number of questions that I'd like to be able to get into and make sure I fully understand the impact, all of the different department budgets that were presented here, just to make sure I understand the full impact. Libraries, for example, what is the impact on our low to moderate citizens? And the reason that's so fresh in my mind, every time you turn on the TV news, they tell you to go to the library to get the information if you don't have a computer. And here, at the same time, we're looking at, you know, are we going to be able to continue to offer some of those services? So there are some real significant areas and questions that I'd like to get into. And I don't know what our timeline is from the council. Will we have another meeting next? I mean, I know what the schedule was, but for us as a council to really...
If I could just throw a comment about that. I'm sure you're all going to have a lot of questions and we're going to run out of time here, but maybe the thing to do, because we're looking at these town hall meetings on the 15th, and I'd really like to get more discussion with you before we have that town hall meeting, it might be wise to schedule another workshop or two between now and then, so we've got a chance to dialogue with you.
Would agree.
And give you some time to digest what you've just heard and come back with questions. So I would suggest, Mayor, that you might want to think about an additional workshop or two, maybe later this week or early next, to allow just you to ask us questions and us to respond back.
I would appreciate that. And then the last item that would just be to follow up on the discussion that we had earlier in your comments, Rick, was on the assessment of the commercial buildings downtown. I'd really like to have some more information as to what our options are, how that was actually determined, who gave direction on just doing it across the board 28%? Because as you showed us in one of those schedules, commercial property is going to go down significantly in their tax bill. And that has a real impact. It's, you know, it's Robin Peter to pay Paul is really what we have there. So if we could have some of that information and some options legally as to what would be available to us as a municipality, I'd like to have that information.
We'll do that.
Again, staff and everybody involved in the budget. It was just excellent presentation.
Thank you, appreciate that. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a sobering assessment, obviously, and I'm looking at the revenue proposals on page 21 that you sort of threw out there as an option, that I'd like to look at using those and utilizing those in a way that we are responsible and perhaps to blunt some of the decreases. And in addition, I also would like to look at, if it is at all possible, to look at some of the reserves that we've had to blunt some of the reductions. I know we haven't really gone down that road, but we do have reserves, and I'd like to look at that. And the reason for that is, I think if we get over the hump in the next couple of years, is, I mean, we've had a major massive recession and values have gone down, and perhaps in the next couple of years, values will start going back up. But I would like to look at that at least and pursue these revenue proposals that you have on page 21.
Okay. Kelly?
I guess a couple of comments I would make. I think the way you laid out the presentation is very helpful when people approach us and say, "Why are you cutting this item?" It's helpful to know what the next item below the line is. So, I mean, in a sense, they've got a grocery list of, "Do you want Service A or Service B?", and these are the options we have. So I think that's helpful to lay it out the way you did. I guess I don't have any specific questions, but I would make a general comment as far as kind of the plan moving forward. I think I have a real hard time swallowing a tax increase, particularly in light of the graphs that you showed toward the end, where basically, we've already put ourselves in a position where commercial is getting a decrease and residential is getting an increase. By raising the tax rate, all we're going to do is further burden that residential taxpayer and not affect the commercial at all. I guess, I don't know that there's a good solution to fixing that, but I, my preference would be to look at ongoing funding with undesignated funds, the Prairie Meadow funds, that's kind of a slush fund, as you mentioned, for economic development and different things like that, where it's not one-time funding, it's not something where we're just filling the gap temporarily, where it's something that, long-term, could be something to address the problem. So that would be my preference, is to look at what opportunities we have to fill that shortfall.
Okay. Kip?
First of all, I'd like to applaud you and staff for putting this together. I know that there's been a lot of work put into this, a lot of good information. Our next meeting with, you know, to me, the jury's still out until we hear from the residents of Des Moines. I don't know if nine days is appropriate for our neighborhoods and our residents to digest this. I hope we're going to have a second town hall meeting sometime in January. We've got a lot of people preparing for Christmas, New Year's. The caucuses are coming up, and I would hope that a week from this Wednesday would be the time that we present the information to the residents, then get back to them in January. I'd also like to say I'm a little bit disappointed in this, at the start of this process, you'd made the statement that we'd cut frontline services enough that we'd be looking to middle and upper management this time, and I see very few cuts in middle and upper management. I would like to have a report that shows over a period of the last four or five years, how many labor positions have been cut and how many SPM positions have been cut, so we can weigh that. And it's, one of these departments, you know, I thank you for providing me with the organizational charts, but one of these departments looks like it's so top-heavy, I'm surprised it's not capsizing. And I think that as many frontline staffers have been cut, maybe it's time we start looking at middle and upper management also.
Well, Mr. Moore, we can generate some information along those lines. It's not difficult, and I'm sure it would be revealing, so we'll have to do it.
Bob?
Well, I also appreciate the presentation. I think it's been the best that I've seen since I've been on the council. Of course, as the others, I've got other questions, but I guess I'd like to get through the 15th meeting and see what the residents have to say and then see the comments today. One of my concerns on the libraries is, you know, I think that's also, some responsibility should be shared with the Des Moines School District. It's a learning situation. It supplements their opportunity for kids to use the computers and get research and that done at the libraries. And so I'm not sure that the public school shouldn't be paying part of the cost of that library.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody, this morning. I believe, I think it's everybody, the more information that we have, the better we'll be able to make these kinds of decisions. I think that as we study the outcomes, Mr. Manager, that we want to have department by department. It'll be interesting then to more reasonably understand resources that you're going to have in place to be able to put at delivering those outcomes. So I'll be interested to see a little more fleshed-out budget, and do appreciate the presentation made this morning that gives us sort of a rough idea where we're headed. If there are no other questions by the council, why don't we quickly open up and see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make public comment? Any public commenters this morning? Step up, sir. Anybody else that would like to? We'd like to have you kind of come over behind the speaker at this time and so we get an idea if there's any other folks that have mind saying anything. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff members, and other members of the community. My name is Chris Green. I live at 3901 Southwest 56th Street. Found the presentation very interesting and somewhat, and of great concern in some areas. When we're cutting our budgets so close in our, in fire and police and public works areas, and also in the library, I think. And for every dollar we cut, I get concerned about the, how much momentum we're losing in areas to restore these services, you know, is it going to take a dollar and a quarter, dollar and a half, $2 down the road? What are we losing by making these cuts and how can we avoid that? That leads me to, it's sort of, the city manager takes us back several years in the 24 million that we've cut, but we also need to look at this in a timeframe of, as we move out of this, how do we restore this? So I want some of the departments, the police and the fire, public works, and the library to look at, and also community services, how do, as these revenues increase or as we have new revenue areas, how do we restore these dollars? You know, do we have a plan for putting them back in place as we've taken them away? Is this a long-term or a temporary? You know, I can suffer a lot in a short period of time. It's that long period of time where that suffering gets to you and you don't really understand what it's doing to you. So are we looking for increases down the road or is this a temporary situation? So one point is the plan restoration. Hearing more about that. We also talk about other sources of revenues, and we look at nonprofits and we look at buildings that don't pay taxes. One of the concerns that I have is that, as an example, I think our hospitals are well enough organized and mobilized, for every dollar of fee that you would charge them for a fire truck to show up, for a snowplow to go by their property, that would come back to me, and I, and as an individual, having my own business and paying my own health care, that would show up in the next renewal of my health care premiums in a fee to me. So you're not helping the situation, you're just transferring the dollar. If you charge Mercy, you know, $10, it's going to come back to me and pay it. You might as well do it in a property tax increase rather than charging it to them, because it'll come back very quickly and I'll have no control or input over that. because it'll come back very quickly, and I'll have no control or input over that whatsoever. Some of the other areas that I'm concerned about, I think I remember, you know, I remember one of the first early cuts that were talked about is animal control, and, you know, it might be an easy thing to go after, but I do remember not too terribly long ago in this community, I think we had packs of dogs roaming in the vacant areas at one time or another. And I'd just like to remind the council that dogs in the last 20 years have become very near and dear to people and very close members of people's families. We have one that lives with us, and, you know, it just sort of happened that way. So I think sort of tempering that cut and looking at how we do other things is something that we need to kind of look at in this equation. I'm troubled, too, about, you know, delivery of services. I particularly like Councilman Moore's comment, what is our model for a municipal government? What is what I call a lean, mean municipal machine? As a citizen of this community, are we delivering snow plowing, fire protection, police protection, parks and rec, and all the services at the least possible cost? Who is the person here at the council or here at the staff member that has the mantra that's going around? Are we looking at every penny, every motion, every expenditure, and making sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our dollar? Last Sunday, I was headed to work, because we worked over the weekend to get some projects done. The lights were on on one of the new bridges down here in ML King, and I called in the call center and told them. And the reason I did it is a principle, to be true to myself and true to my upbringing. I can remember as a young person, my father saying, if you're done in that room, turn out the light. And that is representative of a mindset of how you approach your life, how you do things, and how you treat money and expenditures. I'm not sure that we are there in our management of our municipal government and how we run things. I wish we were, I wish I was more sure about that. And I'm saying to you, to everyone here, is that I think there is some budgetary considerations and things to be picked up in a positive way by having that mantra of being able to say, are we spending our money as efficiently and effectively as possible? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Appreciate everybody's attendance here this morning, and look forward as you have a chance to review the budget recommendations, to have any comments, and please share them with us. Ms. Manager, do you have any?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we have another workshop a week from today, that would be the 12th, and then our town hall meeting on the 15th. I just want to get a sense from you, do you want to try for another workshop later this week, just for Q and A, for you to ask questions? We can respond back to your, or do you want to wait till next Monday? It's up to you.
If we were going to try something Friday, would be about the only day I could do it.
I'd prefer just to wait till we have all the information.
Okay, yeah, all right.
I think Monday would be fine.
Very good.
Do you want us to funnel all questions that we have in writing to you, and you farm them out?
Yes, yes, send them to me and copy Allen, and we'll make sure they get out to the right person.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for attending. We'll see some of you this evening.[1751.73]